Well, it's less than four minutes, but the meeting is coming to order. And I'm going to ask our city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry?
Here.
Councilmember Budge?
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Here.
Mayor McGarvey?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you would announce the meetings via recording and playback schedules, please.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Thursday, November 7th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, November 10th at 6:00 p.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. I am asking Larry Ladd to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then I invite the audience to remain standing for the invocation, which will be held by Olga Herman from the Oasis Ministries.
All right, everybody. Let's celebrate our citizens, the citizens of the United States of America by the Pledge of Allegiance. On the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everyone. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your light that leads and guides the affairs of mankind. You promised never to leave us or forsake us, and you give us the right answers when we turn to you. Lord, we are grateful. You gave us lawful government, judges, and those in authority to keep the peace and prosperity for a healthy society, so that we can all share in the bounty of our great state and cities. We thank you for Rancho Cordova and those you've allowed to be elected to the seats of authority to make wise decisions regarding all people here. We thank you for giving them godly wisdom and solutions for Rancho Cordova that's beyond their natural capacity, especially related to hard choices. We thank you, Lord, where there is chaos, we invite you, Holy Spirit, to bring order. We ask that you hover over those places where there may seem to be no way, especially for our homeless neighbors, children, elders, and those needing extra help. You always have the right answers. We ask forgiveness when we neglect to ask you and sometimes have done things to make it worse. Where there's lawlessness, we ask you to intervene and restore your laws for perfect order. Your word says your hand is not too short to save and your mercy endures forever. I ask a special blessing for the Rancho Cordova City Council. Mayor McGarvey, Vice Mayor Sander, council members Gatewood, Terry, Budge, all those attending today, and the staff here, the city manager, Mr. Abdar, city attorney Lindgren, city clerk Leitner, and Persefina, and other staff. We thank you for that special blessing, Lord, and all those attending today and those serving in administrative roles, first responders, educators, and everyone involved in public service for this city. Give them good health, your wisdom, and protection for them and their families. Guide the city council meeting today with all that needs to be done to finish out the year and prepare for the next year for the right plans, timing, budgets, and events. Lord Jesus, we have entered a month of Thanksgiving, so most of all, we want to continue to thank you for the blessings you've given Rancho Cordova and the future great plans of life and liberty for all its people. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on now to our AM number nine presentations. I ask Stacy Delaney for the presentation, the Community Enhancement Fund Grants, and we'll have the council go up to greet everyone who's receiving these grants tonight.
Thank you, Mayor McGarvey and council. I'm Stacy Delaney, the Community Enhancement Analyst for the city, and we are here tonight to present several ceremonial checks to different organizations that receive grant funding. And the first check tonight is going to be for the Mather Wrestling Club. Operating out of Mitchell Middle School, the Mather Wrestling Club is a youth sports and fitness club that offers an opportunity for young people to learn about wrestling. In addition to coaching, the club promotes sportsmanship and team spirit. The grant funding this year supports a summer 2020 program, and head coach and organizer Joe Zillis is accepting the check for $8,500. Thank you. The second check this evening is for Rancho Cordova Heart and the continuation of its winter shelter and housing services program. Rancho Cordova Heart is a group of congregations, businesses, and individuals who care about those in Rancho Cordova who are currently without a home. Each year, they provide rotating shelter services for the homeless during the winter and provide bus passes for guests that need transportation in order to receive services and facilitate housing-related counseling. Rancho Cordova Heart President Travis Kimball is accepting the check for $13,000.
Thank you.
The third check is for Folsom-Cordova Unified School District and the new instruments purchased for Mills Middle School. Mills Middle School's music department has seen a drastic increase of enrollment in both their band and orchestra. The enrollment has reached a point where the school is able to operate four year-round ensemble classes plus a pep band. The grant is for the purchase of instruments such as trombones, saxophones, violins, and cellos. They are performing this Wednesday at Cordova High School's Performing Arts Center, so if you want to check them out, it will be at 7:00 p.m., and it's free and open to the public. And Beth Crandall, who is the music director at Mills Middle School, is accepting the check for $25,000. I'm voting for violas. Okay. The next check is for Sierra Service Project and the continuation of their neighborhood beautification program. Sierra Service Project returns to Rancho Cordova for another year of home repairs and improvements for our residents. Their small-scale home repair program includes wheelchair ramps and fence installation, exterior painting, and yard cleanup. They work with volunteers from Rancho Cordova, and they provide the project management and supplies. And program managers Sarah Reynolds and Elliot Siserson are accepting the check for $35,650. And the last check this evening is being presented to Pro Youth and Families for their ongoing operation of year-round youth programs here in Rancho Cordova. Pro Youth and Families is dedicated to facilitating youth engagement in local government. Through the Youth at City Council, Summer at City Hall, and community investment programs, Pro Youth and Families builds civic involvement and the healthy development of youth. They are currently accepting applications for the Youth at City Council program. Executive Director Stacy Anderson and program coordinator Wendy Lee, along with some of our wonderful past participants, are here to accept the check for $70,000. That's it. Thank you. This concludes tonight's check presentations.
Okay. I am 9.2. I'm going to ask Maria Nedstat to return to introduce the city of Rancho Cordova intern.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council. Maria Nedstat with the Communications and Public Affairs Department. I'm very happy to introduce to you this evening our new communications intern. His name is Kiatt Tat, and he is going to tell you a little bit about himself.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Kiatt. Very excited to be here, very excited to be an intern at City Hall. I grew up in Rancho Cordova, went to Cordova High School, and then went to UC Berkeley for college, and I graduate, and I'm back home, so it's coming full circle. I'm very excited to continue to pursue my passion in communications and, you know, work for my hometown. A lot of amazing stuff happening here, and just want to continue to shine a light on all the great things, all the exciting stuff happening in Rancho Cordova. So I look forward to seeing all of you at events and working with you guys in the future. Yeah, thanks for having me.
Super.
Very good.
Welcome.
All right. Okay, public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at the time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium by the mayor at the point of the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, I have two speaker cards. The first speaker is Larry Ladd. Following Larry will be Joanne French.
Hi, guys. A big hooray for Kiatt. He's one of my key club guys from way back, so it's fun to see him here as an intern. Another sign of progress at this city is, as Assemblyman Cooley often said, is onward and upward. Yes, sir. All right. Now, this is a quick briefing from the Rancho Cordova Intelligence Agency. It is not an oxymoron. Mr. McGarvey, or Mayor McGarvey, you may remember when the Rancho Cordova Corporation Committee met with Don Natoli on December 22nd, 1996, and I submitted you guys and Mr. Natoli an estimate as to where the water in Rancho Cordova was contaminated, and the final sentence in that was if the safe level of perchlorate is lower than the 400 parts per billion that's the barrier now, then there will be aerosol problems with perchlorate because of the character of the salt. It will bioconcentrate by more than two orders of magnitude, so we will find problems with aerosols. And since we've gone from Fox News in 2005 saying 40,000 parts billions are safe to the Trump administration saying 56 part billion is safe, I take that as a win, and I started looking for the aerosol problems. So, the item for tonight is a very famous activist named Penny Newman, who's been involved with perchlorate, said she'd been approached by the state about raising the safe level of perchlorate from six parts per billion to 12. And I wanted to share with you and have archived my advice to her. My advice to her was that if perchlorate was used in bioweapons as a way of facilitating infection, that needs to be part of the evaluation of its toxicity. And so my advice to her was don't accept a rise from six parts per billion to 12 till you have that information available. And because of historical context, the most likely bioweapon it would be involved with is what I've handed you guys. It's in a new book that came out in May. And the fellow that they're interviewing is no, Twinkie. He was the deputy director of the White House and the Carter administration and treasurer of the Democratic National Party at one time. So we'll see how, and I pass that hot potato on to Penny, and we'll see how it all works out. I gave you a Xerox copy of the relevant pages, and we'll see how it unfolds. One other thing to see, if it really is that toxic, then there may be periods of exposure from volcanic eruptions. And so, in case there's any linkage with the recent EE outbreak, I've asked Assemblyman Cooley to request the perchlorate records for the Colorado River since they started to see if there's any blip up recently from the volcanic eruption. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry, and thank you for this. It's very interesting.
Next speaker is Joanne French.
Good evening. First, accept my gratitude for all that you do. I'm proud to say that I live in this all-American city. I'm a resident of the Mobile Country Club Mobile Home Park and a member of the Homeowners Association. Our president, Bob Van Cleef, couldn't be here tonight. He wanted to pass on some information to you. I've got copies for all of you. He's been hardworking, making connections, and gathering information all across the country about the issue that affects low-income people living in mobile home parks and the need for some kind of rent control and ways to make housing affordable for them. So with that, I'll pass this out. What it is, is a little bit of information from David Lupe, who's a California attorney and a real estate specialist, and he has been working to create nonprofits so that people can buy the Mobile Home Park, so it becomes residence-owned. But, you know, it's a big uphill battle, so anyway.
That's called co-op-ing the community.
Yeah, like a cooperative.
Yeah. There's actually financing tools to help homeowners do that. There's actually financing tools from some banks and what are called community development financial institutions that'll actually help homeowners finance to do that.
Yeah, he's been working with investors, and it's, I think, the hardest challenge is getting all the residents to chip in. You need a certain level.
Yep, yep.
Thank you for the information.
That's all the speaker cards I have.
Okay, that's all the cards we have. Anyone else in the audience wishes to speak right now? Okay, then, seeing none, we'll close the public comment time and go to council reports. Donald.
I'll be brief. I think just the highlights, I want to congratulate, or thank Loriann and her whole team. I believe this was the fifth year of the AMWEN Lincoln Village, It Takes a Lincoln Village Truck Retreat. I can't remember if they actually did, like, enrollment like they used to do and, like, check-in, but just anecdotally, I handed out about 130 candy bars in about 15 minutes before I started seeing repeat offenders coming back for extras, which they'll do until the candy's gone. Yeah, but it was a great event, thanks to all the city staff that came and decorated our vans and trucks and cars and stuff that we had, too. So it was, it was really a great turnout, and really thrilled about all of the work that went into it. And it's interesting to think that five years ago, what we were dealing with in that neighborhood, which ended up being kind of the second neighborhood that we ever did neighborhood engagement in that way, with Loriann and Ron Dwyer-Voss, I know there was an effort in Cavalet Ranch, but I think trying to address what was going on in La Loma, and lo and behold, as soon as we started to get our arms around La Loma, things cropped up in Lincoln Village, right? Because the bad guys just moved to the other side of the highway in some ways. But that group, you know, five years later is still, you know, we're talking about, you know, the holiday light parade's going to be next month.
They've planted trees.
They've done trees, they've done drought-resistant landscaping, all kinds of different things. And it all came out of a crisis, right? So I just, you know, it's one little event. I mean, it's been a big event for them, but it really is cool because that was really the first thing they ever tried to do in that neighborhood, and it's still surviving five years later. So I just think that's phenomenal. I'll give a short plug. My son's soccer team, and there might be a coach somewhere in this room, is still undefeated, including beating the only undefeated team that Folsom has, and a pretty good drubbing, I will say, too. But yeah, Rancho Soccer these days is a bit of a regional powerhouse. It's also, talking about milestones, yesterday was, I believe it was the one year since the Paradise Fire.
Yeah.
And in my day job, working for the biggest bank in that region, that area is not anywhere close to even starting to rebuild. And if that can be a testament, and just, I'll just share this, I know there's another documentary or report later this week that's going to come out from some of the local stations, but Frontline had an hour special last night on just this, and the number of breakdowns as far as preparing for disaster and underestimating how bad it could be. And we're seeing it over and over and over. And, you know, while we love our trees and other things like that, I just want to say that making sure that we understand how we would get 80,000 people out of this city in the event of a big emergency, I think is something that we might want to start to think about. And also the fact that, you know, most of the interviews that they were doing and the call centers, for those of you who don't know, with Cal OES, you know, just down the street, that is really where the epicenter was of the response to what was going on a year ago. And most of us were down in NLC, and I think we even talked about how, you know, for the first day, the news was all about Malibu and rich people losing homes, right? And it wasn't for about 48 hours before the reports started to come in about how bad that actually was. And, you know, this state's on fire right now in a bunch of places. So whether we're talking global warming or better forest management, a lot of other things to just kind of reflect that we were all, most of us were in LA at the National League of Cities watching Malibu go up in flames when a whole bunch more people were being displaced and being killed, right? You know, two hours from here. And then finally, I just want to give a short update on an initiative that started when I was mayor, which is the Lincoln Village, or the Lincoln Goes to College Initiative over Abraham Lincoln. We launched the Financial Literacy Program portion of that program, and so students, as they complete the six modules of Financial Literacy, they're going to earn money towards college. They also earn money towards college by visiting colleges, so they're going to go to Folsom Lake College, they have a plan to go to UC Davis, they're going to visit Safe Credit Union. I'm trying to think, there's another trip in there. If the parents go to Financial Literacy Night, they'll also earn money towards their student's college. So there's a lot of great opportunities here, and it's been really great working with the principal, Laura Butler over there, who, funny enough, Folsom-Cordova Community Partnership is the nonprofit running it. And Laura, who was the first SAC City Unified employee to ever go through leadership at Rancho Cordova, was in the same class with Robert Sanger. So it's been really interesting that they finally are making inroads into SAC City Unified and offering some programming, so really great. And I know we're going to have the superintendent come and visit later on this month, I think, or no, next month, next month, next meeting, okay. But Laura did say that the results that they got from that summer school program that we paid for was phenomenal, and they were able to put that thing together in about three weeks from us kind of giving them the go-ahead that, yeah, we'll probably have the money. They're going to ask for it again this year, and if, and with the lead-in time, she says that they can really deliver some great results for us. So they were singing the city's praises when we were over there last week. So again, thanks for everyone's support on that.
Hi, Linda.
Okay, so I received a very nice thank you letter from Cordova High for having judged the homecoming floats, which was very fun, considering that I had, although I shouldn't say that, but I had ties to two of the class year floats, so.
Did one of those two win?
I'm not saying. So. And then, speaking of musical performances, they, the Mitchell Middle School and the Cordova High choirs had a joint performance a couple of weeks ago, which was really inspirational. I would like to, we can't take credit for it, but the fact that we have supported the music programs in schools like tonight has really enabled them to take their accomplishments, their performances to a different level. And it just, if we're stepping in to do something that the districts cannot do in California, that's really a great thing. So we can be very proud of that. We had our two-by-two meeting with Metro Fire, and Metro Fire publishes this really delightful one-page summary of what's going on here in Rancho Cordova, and our communications department has that. But they also talked about a special program that they're doing that goes into preschools and teaches little kids about fire safety. And they have been to something, they have spoken now to something like 300 little kids in preschools in Rancho Cordova. And I also gave that to Maria because unless you've got a child or a grandchild in preschool, you wouldn't really know that that's going on, and we need to celebrate with them their accomplishments there. Sunday after, I think it was Sunday after Halloween, or no, I guess it was before Halloween, we, some of us went out to Lincoln Village on that incredibly windy day and helped them celebrate the fact that they're going to have a welcome to Lincoln Village ribbon, or I'm sorry, sign out there, right at the intersection, right at the northeast corner of Lincoln Village Park, right on Route 2, where everybody will be able to see it. And we are assured it's the first of those signs, and there could easily be some more around other entrances to Lincoln Village. It will go, it's going to be a really handsome sign, and it just, it's part of that, it takes a Lincoln Village, because that's who put this effort together. And it gives them something, its place-making gives them something to be proud of for their neighborhood. The city lunch for Halloween was absolutely hilarious. Kudos to city staff for once again entertaining themselves and everybody else with remarkable costumes and the themes of each different department. They've been doing this for years, and it's a wonderful tradition. So Friday night, I ended up being the only person who attended the Russian Best of the Best dinner since my colleagues didn't quite make it, but it was just as spectacular as it normally is. They, I will confess that I didn't stay till the end because it always runs late and it runs on quite long, but they crowned the evening by actually crowning a Miss Russian California. And we had the parents of one of the contestants sitting at our table, and they were so proud of her. It was really a very nice event, and for these girls, they definitely make it not just a beauty contest, and although every one of them is absolutely drop-dead gorgeous and equally deserving of winning. And then this morning, we had the pleasure of going out to cut a ribbon on the, call it the Cordova High Walking Waiting Plaza. This is the intersection of Coloma and Chase. The pedestrian and vehicular access, bicycle access in that intersection has been a problem since before my kids and Officer Tracy all went to school at Cordova High. And this is a really great opportunity for us to once again thank the voters of Rancho Cordova who voted for Measure H that provides the wherewithal for us to remodel this corner and make it something that provides more safety, more security, more opportunities for communication for everybody who goes to Mills and to Cordova High. That's my report.
Very good. Thank you, Linda. Good.
It's awesome to steal candy from trunk or treat. It's great to see Lincoln and all the different churches and groups like River City and the one that's on Sunrise across from the Bel Air, someone over there. Sun River. It's great to see all the community getting involved because it's good to see everyone come out and have a safe area to do it at. I did attend the Russian American Awards for two and a half hours, so let me understand.
Never made it into dinner.
Two and a half hours of just kicking it, so it was a lot. But, you know, it's, the history behind it is amazing because we basically helped to start it. It used to be in a little teeny room, and it used to be hosted in Rancho Cordova at the Platinum Palace. And they brought that up, and I was like, well, it's going to be great having you guys come back once our very new center gets built. And they're like, we can't wait to come back home.
And I said, that's right. Great to know that Rancho Cordova is stomping all the kids from Folsom and Eldorado Hills because they should know better than to come down here and play soccer with us. So a heartwarming thing, so you guys probably don't know, but the Junior Lancer Program was on the verge of closing. And we were brought to it by them as a way to try to save it. And so a bunch of us council members came together, and we were able to get someone to help. Dennis, wherever you are, you're an amazing person. And to take that challenge on and bring it back is amazing. With the help of Cyrus and some of my council members, we were able to fund it and get it back up and running. So they, for the first time, made the playoffs. And on top of everything else, they won their first game. And the junior cheerleaders took home a first place. So Rancho Cordova finally has their football program back up and running. There's active parents from both the Anatoly and the other areas all funneling in there. And it was great to see, because now I'm starting to get the pressure from parents to go after like Jacob. And they really want Keaton. And they're like, well, you know, because Keaton knocks people over in soccer, which is why he's amazing. But they also want him on the football program now. So it's great to see that the energy that's starting to come with the city starting to grow. So that's my only report. Great job, guys. Junior Lancer Program, back on track.
Very good, thank you. David?
Well, my colleagues have given some of my reports. So Coloma and Chase, that was fun this morning, seeing what we can accomplish. I can't wait until that corner is connected to the Parkway by a similar facility of separated sidewalk, bikeway. That'll be awesome. Soilborne Farm, the high school, great, great project that we can do there. The Lincoln Village, both trunk-or-treat. And I know there are a lot of city staff there, but I couldn't identify them all because they were in costume. But the PD also did a great job there. They actually took the little PD trailer and turned it into, I guess we'll say, a haunted house. Kind of small, but people could walk through and get a little scared inside. A safe PD haunted house. The Lincoln Village sign unveiling was fun. I attended the Junior Lancers, my colleague mentioned the Junior Lancers. I attended their year-end dinner last week, which was held. And it was a packed room. They previously had held it here, and frankly, they're so successful now, they've outgrown this room. So they were at a different event facility here. And Garrett, I'll one-up you a little bit on that. The cheerleaders for them, actually, they didn't just win like a first place. They went like to the playoffs essentially. And there were 66 other like Rancho Cordova places competing, each of which had maybe three cheerleading teams. So our cheerleaders came in like first out of like 200 cheerleading teams, the U-14 group. So they killed it. And to think that this program was nearly dead until at RCA meetings, you know, the head of soccer and the head of Little League and the head of girls softball, Dennis LaMuncha is the head of Little League, said, we got to save this, you know, and stepped up. That's such a success for U-Sports, helping themselves out in that way. And I think just a great demonstration of what democracy is like, right? Government is in support here, we're not doing this, they're doing this. We're helping them fulfill, you know, their desires and their wishes. And it's a great accomplishment. The Faith Council met last week. We talked about, actually, it was the homeless program that's run by the churches here in Rancho Cordova this summer. What else do I need to report? Oh, the funniest thing I have to report. I did some filming for Amgen, you know, the Amgen Cycle Race. And they had, and we had great staff. Ashley was coordinating it. We're out here in front of City Hall, and they had a big film crew and staff and filmed me, and I had to pretend I'm mayor because this is something they were going to use next year. And we're talking about, talking about, talk about it. And their professional staff, and they said, oh, you did such a great job, such a great job. And then people also have to redo it, you did a great job. And then I realized later, I did such a great job that I killed Amgen. Because I was like the last official act of Amgen before the plug got pulled by the organizers. So unfortunately, we won't, we're not going to be the Amgen destination next year. The organization that organizes the entire race decided to put the race on hiatus because it wasn't making enough money, I think.
It's a huge financial strain.
So it's not just us. It's the entire state, Amgen's been basically canceled for at least one year, maybe permanently, I don't know. But I have the, you know, the wonderful moniker of having killed it on camera.
Well, it's like whoever's last turn out the lights.
But I'm sure they're going to want it back because that was such a success for California.
Well, and they pointed out, in their press release, they pointed out that cycling remains hugely popular in this country and in Europe. It's just that here in California, they weren't covering their cause.
So I also participated in Secog last week. We had a board meeting. We had a Regional Futures Forum. A couple of you were at that Regional Futures Forum. And our Civic Lab team, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Civic Lab, but Civic Lab is Secog's effort to get people in different jurisdictions to think creatively about big problems. And we started with transportation and mobility last year. This year, with my influence, we chose to focus on commercial corridors and the problems facing redevelopment of commercial corridors. And so Rancho Cordova entered a team, and it's focused on Folsom Boulevard, some specific sites on Folsom Boulevard. And they each had to develop a pitch, because they have to make a pitch to builders and investors and developers and partners. And far and away, of the 11 teams that participated, our team has repeatedly been called the best pitch. And so I think what we'll have to do is have our staff come in here, because I'm not even going to attempt to describe it because I would ruin it. Have our team come in here at some future meeting and give the pitch for Folsom Boulevard along with Civic Lab. And maybe we have James come that night, that would be perfect, actually. We'll bring James Corliss from Secog. He can talk to us about Civic Lab and Rancho Cordova's participation. Then we can have our team do their little pitch. It's very impressive. And the great news is that the Secog Board has agreed to continue the effort looking at old commercial corridors into next year. So it's a task force rather than another new topic for Civic Lab. Civic Lab is going to wait a year. And we're going to continue working on this old commercial corridor because this is of huge import to every jurisdiction in our region. Trying to find ways to reinvest in these old corridors that otherwise are just a drag on our region. All right, I think that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you, David. I was at the Chase in Coloma, ribbon cutting today. I'm going to give a little few of the things that were done to make that corner as wonderful as it is. They expanded the decorative concrete sidewalks, high-visibility crosswalks and bicycle facilities, audible pedestrian signals, traffic signal modifications to video and radar detection, enhanced metal beam guard rail, decorative fencing and enhanced landscaping. And nobody would have ever thought something like that could have been done. But Measure H, and as you said, Linda, that was one of those wonderful things that's been done here in Rancho Cordova. And that was definitely a scary kind of a corner. And it's so much better right now, my goodness. You have to go back and look at it if you haven't seen it. Let's see, they're going to be putting in some sidewalks on the parallel, the road alongside Coloma for kids to walk on safely, because there's no sidewalks there. Also, on the other side of those big tall, you know, plants that are there. Anyway, they're going to be putting in sidewalks there. And it's going to be also, one of the things they're going to do is they're going to redo Aramont. And that's needed that for a long time, too. So that's also something that's going to be done. The Veterans Day is going to be first time at the Cordova High Performing Arts Center. And that was kind of looked at as, well, maybe it'd be a little bit safer. We don't know when we had it finally done, whether it was going to rain, whether it was going to be any smoke, like it was last year, and it shut it down. But it's going to be in the Performing Arts Center. And that's going to be great, I think. And there's, since it's the Veterans Day and everything is going to be closed, there'll be a lot of parking for everybody. And it's going to be a great, great thing, I think. So that's mainly what I've got right now, because everything else has been said very well. And I go on to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I'd like to add to what has been already said, starting today, we, Regional Transit is going to start on-demand service for our residents generally north of Highway 50 within the city limits. And this is very similar, the program is called Smart Ride. And it's a call-up service. And so the work is, the shuttles, you will probably see the shuttles labeled as a smart ride throughout the city. Our communication team is in contact with Regional Transit, and we will do the appropriate broadcasting and messaging of the program. And later this year, early 2020, there will also be a special app that will be available to our residents to use the service. This is a great new service that is very similar to the program that Regional Transit implemented in citrus heights some time ago. And it's for areas and for residents that don't have easy access to public transit.
So it's on-demand?
It's on-demand, that's correct.
But it's not as rigid as paratransit?
No, it's not.
So basically, you call and it comes by and gets you?
That's correct.
And the area that's being covered on this is from Sunrise all the way to the Public Library and from Folsom all the way to Ambassador. So that whole area, which didn't have anything before, has a chance now to actually get to Light Rail, get to the businesses. And that'll be a nice chance for them to at least not have to call a taxi or wait for somebody in the family to give them a ride or something like that. They can do it on their own. And that, the $5?
No, that's, the $5 is a different program.
Different program, okay.
This is a different program. This is, yeah. We get you, we have more information. This is the launch date, the soft launch date was today. And as we do more of testing the program itself, the real broadcasting will happen first of the year.
Okay, so I'll talk to Maria about it. But let's be sure that we tell the schools and the churches on Zimphadel while Regional Transit figures out what they're going to do about Zimphadel. Because we have three churches and four schools and lord knows what all, Medical Plaza, et cetera, that's been abandoned on Zimphadel. And it's causing huge problems. And I've talked to Henry Lee about it. But we just need to make sure that we proactively share this information with all of those facilities so that they can at least tell their clients, their students, their parishioners, whatever, that there is some alternative for the time being.
Sure.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Cyrus. Okay, on to item 13, Consent Calendar Items Consistent Matters Deemed Routine and Non-controversial by Staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual considerations, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items council wishes to pull?
Seeing none, I'll move approval of items 13.1 through 13.4.
Second.
Okay, the motion and the second roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Item number 14, Consent Public Hearing Items, and there are none. So we'll go on to Public Hearing, Public Hearing Items. Ask the city clerk to announce the subject, so that's what I'm doing.
The first subject of the public hearing is T-Mobile Antenna Addition, Conditional Use Permit Amendment, Project DD 9881, located at 10653 Coloma Road.
Move to continue.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to continue on that item. Roll call.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to 16, Regular Calendar Items. Ask the city clerk to announce the subject, please, 16.1.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova approving a 5% performance incentive payment for Cyrus Abhar for service as city manager.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor of Council, members of the community. I'm pleased to report that the City Council conducted and concluded the city manager's annual performance review recently. And the council agreed and reported out that his overall performance in the year 2019 was outstanding. Consistent with the terms of his employment agreement, the council has before it a resolution that would consider the approval of a 5% performance incentive payment based upon the council's conclusion regarding his performance for the past year. And this would be in addition to his regular compensation provided therein. With that, discussion or motion by the council regarding the recommendation would be in order.
I move approval of item 16.1.
Second.
Okay, are there any speaker cards on this item?
No, there's not.
All right, roll call, please.
Was that Councilmember Gatewood that seconded?
It was.
Thank you. Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, item 16.2, ask a city clerk to announce the subject, please.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of the City of Rancho Cordova Grant Line 208, Community Facilities District Number 2018-1, approving and directing the execution of a fiscal agent agreement, approving the form of preliminary official statement, approving sale of such bonds and approving other related documents and actions, confirming the issuance and sale of special tax bonds, approving official statement, bond purchase agreement and authorizing related documents and actions on behalf of the City of Grant Line 208, Community Facilities District Number 2018-1.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. Michelle Mangue, Senior Finance Analyst. As the city clerk has read, the item that is before you this evening for consideration is an authorized, is a resolution authorizing the issuance of the first series of special tax bonds for and on behalf of Community Facilities District 2018-1, Grant Line 208. The CFD was formed in 2018 for the purpose of funding facilities and certain impact fees within the Grant Line 208 project. The financing-related resolution before you this evening approves the sale of bonds in an amount not to exceed $8 million. And similar to previous CFDs, the proceeds from the issuance of these bonds are anticipated to be used for the payment of infrastructure-related impact fees. And the special tax bonds issued by the Community Facilities District are secured solely by special taxes levied and collected within the CFD's boundaries. And they are not a debt of the city's general fund. I would like to note an error in the staff report. The staff report currently reads that this action authorizes the final series of CFD bonds, when in fact, this is the first series of CFD bonds. And with that, I will open it up to any questions that the council may have for the Finance Department and/or our Bond Finance Team, which is in the audience this evening.
Can I ask a question? Do we have an amended version of that with the corrected language? Are we needing to do that tonight?
It's just the staff report.
Oh, okay.
The resolution is correct, it's read, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions?
Do we have anybody in the audience to speak to the item? Or wants to speak to the item?
I don't have any speaker cards.
Then I'll move approval of item 16.2 with the correction to the staff report.
With the correction, okay. The roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 16.3, and we ask the city clerk to announce this subject, please.
Ordinances repealing and replacing various chapters of Title 16, Buildings and Construction by adopting by reference state building codes and making local amendments to portions thereof and adopting other related codes.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor McGarvey and city staff. I'm Joe Cuff, City Building Official. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter. This is our tri-annual adoption of city building codes. The state of California, every three years, adopts a new model code and passes that on to the local government to look at and make amendments to as needed for the local situation. We have, for the last few cycles, made very little modifications to the state. We have, for the last few cycles, made very little modifications to the state code. The modifications we made were back in 2010, have not changed since then. All we did this year with the help of the city attorney's office was modify some of the language and clarify, clarify a few of the ordinances that had kind of lapsed in the way that they're presented. We just kind of brought the language up to current language in the code. We did modify our administrative code. It's a little longer, but it's actually clearer because we broke out how we administrate all of the different codes we have instead of trying to make it one document. And then we did modify our swimming pool code to correct what we considered a mistake by the state. We require a barricade between properties. When there's a pool, we want to make sure no one can cross properties and have an unfortunate accident where there may be a drowning. The state law does not preclude anyone from leaving a pool wide open to their neighbors. We, we worked with the City of Citrus Heights, the City of Folsom, and they're all also adopting the same measure. Basically, right now, state law allows people to choose two different safety features out of a list of seven. Basically, what we're doing is taking one of those away from them and saying, you will have to put a barricade if you have a pool, whether that's around the pool or whether that's just fences around the property. You need to have something that keeps people from crossing into your property and causing someone to drown.
Jules.
And then they have to choose another one.
That's so ironic that you have to have a barricade from your house to the pool, but not from the pool to other people's property?
Well, the state changed the law. And the last couple of weeks, I've been at a conference talking to other people about that. And the consensus is they think it was a mistake that we didn't get caught. They thought like there's a language that was just missed.
Yeah.
The author of the bill says, no, no, that's what I wanted it to do because it actually tells them they have to choose other safety devices. But it doesn't say they have to have something that keep people from getting across your property line. We don't require people to have fences for their properties, but what we're saying is if they have a pool, they have to have some sort of barricade. And, and that's kind of open to suggestion as to what that could be.
Interpretation.
Absolutely.
Joe, could you talk about any changes to the code with regard to PEXs or plastic water piping in houses? Has there been any, any update in the code?
Um, not really. It's still allowed. It's been allowed since the 2010 code. It keeps coming up as a subject matter at a lot of the conferences I go to, but no one seems to know why. There are problems with some of it.
If it keeps failing, then it's gonna keep coming up.
We do know about that.
My word.
I know that the inspectors in our city have been very diligent about making sure fittings are correct, making sure they're using the correct tools to put those fittings on, because we have heard all of the stories. And Councilmember Budge actually worked with me on a project that she was involved in that had a problem with that.
Right.
It is a widespread problem, and it turns out it's a certain type of PEXs from a certain company. At least they think so. But I believe that they've addressed that. There's lawsuits and things are happening, but.
And there's, there's ads on the radio saying, you know, dial one or whatever to replumb your house.
Yeah.
Which is kind of remarkable.
There's also the attorney ones where they're saying, if you have this type of PEXs, please call us. There's not a lot of it in Rancho Cordova. We've kind of caught some of it.
It is localized. We have certain neighborhoods that.
Yes, there are. And, and.
You, you can see that with any product. I mean, the, the home I, I have now, you know, we, we've already replaced four windows since we got there. The company that, that manufactured them is out of business and probably sold, I don't know, 2 million windows during the boom time, and now they don't exist. You see products like that all the time. So it's not necessarily PEXs, it's one of the, it's not, it's like, years ago, they used to say, and I remember working for an assembly member and somebody calling saying, every dual pane window fails within 10 years. No. The one you bought that's in your house made, like the one I have, that they, that when we replaced them, they said, yeah, pretty much, you're gonna replace every window in that house. Because they had faulty stuff and they got sued and they went out of business. But not every PEXs is the same thing.
No.
And I, and I agree with your, with your, your point, Donald, but it's a little more disruptive when your pipes break than when you need to replace your windows because the seal broke.
Sure. And it's also more expensive and it can cause health issues.
Right.
You know, so can windows, but having, having water in your house that you don't know about in your walls can cause some serious health issues.
Exactly.
And just since I have a moment, I'll also go over something else that's come up as a big button issue is photovoltaic systems, starting in January. PV systems, I'll qualify that, not necessarily panels, but photovoltaic systems are required on all homes, new homes being built after January 1st. That can be achieved a number of ways. The easiest way, obviously, are solar panels. Right now, all of the houses being built in Rancho Cordova have solar panels. So if you hear from people saying, how are we achieving the requirement from the state? That is how we're doing it right now. There is an opportunity coming soon that we may have localized solar farms that's being bandied about throughout the region right now. Local utilities are trying to see if there's interest in that and if it's something they can feasibly do financially, but it is allowed by code. So right now, all of our builders use solar panels. They're all permitted with solar panels. But in the future, we may have someone who wants to do a localized solar farm in their community, and that's something we would have to look at.
Are there exceptions for like rebuilds? I rebuilt a house in Rancho Cordova neighborhood and I've got 100-year-old trees in my front yard that completely shade my roof.
Yes. There, in fact, there are six different exceptions to this rule. And shade, the inability to actually use a solar panel that would be effective is one of them. There's also rules, this, this only affects brand-new houses right now. It does not affect, you know, remodels of houses or, you know, any kind of existing structure. But knowing California, that's next. So currently, it's, it's new construction only. Yes, if your house is completely shaded and it will not be effective, you would get an exemption for that. You can also get a reduction in the size of your solar panels if you have battery storage, if you have certain other, there's, I have a whole list of them. I'll be glad to read them all to you if you'd like.
Thank you for the offer, but no, I think.
Okay. So we also have some representatives from Metro Fire here tonight. Lisa Barsdale and Krishna Fields are both with Metro Fire and they worked on Title 17 of this, which is no mean feat. If you have any questions regarding the fire code, they'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, this is actually a first reading and we'll be back again in a couple of weeks to talk about it again.
Bob, I did have one question. I want to say it was Stone Creek. It might have been the Elliott Development, but I, I know there were builders that were doing this where there, there's photovoltaic on the roof, but the homeowners don't own it and aren't benefiting from it.
That's Lennar.
Was it Lennar? I, I want to say Elliott did it too. Is that still happening? And does that count as part of the code? Because they, basically, there's, they're pre-leasing the roof to some company and selling the power.
So the code requires a certain amount of energy efficiency on every home. And credits are given for the types of efficiency model that the house is built under. So they can actually lease those facilities back to the homeowner. They don't have to, you don't have to own your own solar panels. You can lease them from somebody. That is allowed by code, as long as the, the house is still getting the credit for the efficiency of it. When they were doing that, where they were putting panels on the homes and then they were generating electricity for the utility, basically. And the homeowner was getting nothing out of that, that actually doesn't help the homeowner and it doesn't make their home efficient.
Okay, so that, that wouldn't meet the code anymore.
They would have to find another way to get the credits for that home by, usually by insulating the attic or using different materials. Yeah, it wasn't the best way.
But you can still meet the code just straight through the R, R factor or whatever.
You used to be able to.
Okay. But you won't be able to.
Come January 1st, you'll have a harder time.
Okay. You still have your R rate rating and you still have to do some sort of.
Yep.
Or, or pay into a, a farm of some sort.
Exactly, yes. And those will all be allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, is anybody using the roof shingles that have solar capacity?
Not yet. We have had a couple of conversations with the Tesla. They're usually the one that's kind of at the forefront of all these. They are putting one together right now in Citrus Heights, and they've invited all the building departments from the region to come see how they do it. We're all still a little leery about it, as is the fire department. We remember that during a fire, they have to climb up there and cut holes in a roof. And if they can't see where the panels are, it's a little hard to say, I'm gonna cut a hole and vent that roof if I don't want to cut through an electrical piece of equipment. So hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we're gonna go out to Citrus Heights and watch the installation of one and see what it looks like. Technically, it's still one of those things that would have to be approved as an alternate method right now because we're still kind of on the fence with it. But everything I've heard is that it's very efficient and that the testing they've done on it says it works very well. And it's very hard to tell the difference.
Mm-hmm.
I would think that's probably gonna be very popular.
Super.
Good name.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So this is a first reading, so I will move approval that we adopt the resolution away the first reading and introduce this ordinance and set a public hearing for further consideration for November the 18th at 5:30.
Have a second.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I am 16.4. Could you announce the subject, please?
And thank you to Metro Fire and everybody else that came to offer.
Discussion and possible direction for local regulations regarding vaping and smokeless tobacco products.
Thank you, Council. Staff and members of the community. This item comes to the council in response to specific comments that members of the council raised and that discussions among staff regarding the very serious public health developments and regulatory developments and actions by various local, state, and to a lesser extent, the federal government regarding vaping and different aspects of the dangers and risks that it poses and the way the public and, and local government and governments are responding to those issues. And it provides an update to the, the laws that we already have on the books, how they evolved, and potential options for additional direction that you could give to us to bring back updates to the, the city's approach to regulating and addressing these public health and safety and aesthetic and community issues. City currently has a series of smoking-related regulations on the books that have evolved over a significant number of evolutions with the council, and, and I'll talk about those very, very briefly and summarize some of them. 6.84030 is really one of the core laws that we have on the books. It prohibits smoking in a variety of public places, including light rail, public meeting rooms, restaurants, bars, within 20 feet of various public places, dining, outdoor dining is what regulates and prohibits, and parks and trails, among other things. Another highlight here is the prohibitions that we added regarding smoking lounges and hookah bars and e-cigarette lounges that recognize the requirement in California law that there be the allowance for indoor smoking in these particular areas where there's retail smoking and tobacco shops. But the way we approached those was to impose very significant operational requirements for them and also very significant separation requirements, effectively limiting very dramatically the places that these kind of businesses could be located. And, and to some extent, effectively, the number that could be in the city because of a 500-foot separation requirement as in between each of these types of businesses, and then 1,000-foot separation requirement between these businesses and things like schools and sensitive uses and recreational zones. So there, these, these uses are allowed, but they are effectively quite limited and quite regulated.
Adam, before you go on down the page, I have a question. The second one, smoking in multifamily residential properties.
The current prob, yes, the current.
Do we prohibit it?
I know it's prohibited in indoor common areas. And then there's a variety of regulations regard, regarding the requirement for publication about the, the limitations on smoking. There's a requirement that there be communication with the tenants. But one of the issues that we'll raise for you is the possibility of whether or not you want to further limit or prohibit smoking in, in multifamily residential.
Okay, well, I wanted to ask because I'm being bombarded with letters about that.
Okay, so, so that's, that's one of the issues that we'll, we'll raise for you as a, as a potential choice. There are opportunities for further restricting or potentially prohibiting smoking altogether in, in multifamily residential.
And I would just say, I don't, I don't recall an exact position on that, the last time we talked about it. But in, just anecdotally talking to property owners of multifamily, most of them had no problem if we made that a law because they would happily enforce it and use it as a tool for, you know, making sure that people are in compliance and not having to repaint their stuff all the time. So most of them had zero qualms with us doing that. I can't remember if the association weighed in on it. And I know the association was very supportive of the common area stuff that we put in.
So that's one of the specific.
I was having the exact same memory failing.
Yeah. And, and, and I think the important thing to remember about the Apartment Association and whatever it's called now that, I believe Jim Laufkin's running it now.
Right.
In the California, whatever. But they tend to represent the good eggs as far as property owners of multifamily.
Yeah.
The, the ones that we have issues with usually aren't part of their membership.
Yep.
So again, that will be one of the specific opportunities that we will ask for your direction on at the end of the presentation. Again, continuing a brief chronology of how the city started to address vaping and e-cigarettes in 2014, we came back with what turned out to be to the anti-smoking and, and health community of well-recognized and to some extent, award-winning batch of tobacco-related ordinances that in, started to build into the city's smoking limitations, specific definitions that would address, that addressed e-cigarettes and electronic smoking devices and electronic cigarette cartridges and to treat them with the same regulations and limitations as other types of smoking. Then we layered on additional, a series of additional steps and, and other changes, again, addressing hookah lounges, updating the definitions and tightening up the definitions of smoke shops and e-cigarettes and vapor bars, trying to keep up with some of what we saw as the evolution of the vaping-related industry as it started to evolve. And then concluded, as I said, with a, for later, later updates regarding the separation requirements for, for those hookah lounges and e-cigarette smoking venues. So what is the current legal landscape federally in other states and among your peer cities? The Trump administration is, is expected to announce that the U.S. FDA regulatory ban on flavored vaping project, products, except products that are flavored as tobacco or menthol, according to a Wall Street report. The FDA has issued draft guidance for compliance policies for pre-market review and requirements for certain deemed tobacco products. They haven't yet taken actual, specific definitive action. They've indicated that they are intending to take action but have not yet done anything that is, is, is prohibitory, prohibitive, or, or specifically regulatory. A number of states and a number of cities, as we'll discuss, have jumped into this current temporary gap in the regulatory fabric and banned flavored e-cigarettes. Michigan, New York, Rhode Island, Utah, Massachusetts, and Washington have both stepping in with moratorium. Washington enacted an emergency ban. So they're both permanent and. So there are both permanent and temporary bans that we're seeing individual states jumping into. In our state, Governor Newsom has announced, has issued an executive order that really starts the ball rolling and provides direction to a number of departments and allocates monies but doesn't yet take specific action to prohibit these issues. There is a direction to develop recommendations regarding vaping devices for people under 21 and establish standards for nicotine contents, allocation of monies from the cannabis program funds for vaping awareness, and a particular focus on counterfeit vaping products. Locally, we see more direct and, to some extent, affirmative actions being taken by a number of cities with various types of bans, either in close proximity to youth-populated areas or kind of following some of our sensitive, proximity-to-sensitive uses regulation that you saw in our earlier work on hookah bars and vaping lounges, that same type of regulatory approach you see being followed by other jurisdictions like Berkeley. And Santa Clara County reflects another approach to banning it, except in specific adult-only stores where you could further prohibit the access of vaping products to minors. Again, a few examples, a variety of examples from other cities and how they've stepped into this, bans based upon distance from youth-populated areas, adults-only stores, complete bans on flavored tobacco. And altogether, we see approximately 50 jurisdictions in California that prohibit smoking inside of multifamily units, was another one of the issues that we saw and addressed. This particular ban, action comes in a variety of different forms, but we do see many cities stepping in into and going further now in terms of the prohibitions or limitations on multifamily housing. And we ultimately seek your direction on where you would like us to go with the next evolution of the anticipated tightening up and further restriction of smoking and vaping in the City Ranch of Cordoba. Among the topics that we would welcome your direction on tonight or to continue for further questions or input, if you have them, would be increasing smoking distance restrictions within a code, further restricting or prohibiting smoking in multifamily housing, restrictions or bans on the sale of e-cigarettes or vaping products within the city limits. You could follow any one of, or we could discuss further the regulatory approaches of other cities in that regard, if you'd like. We also would welcome any additional conversations that the Council would like to have. We know that a number of you probably discuss this issue in various different ways at the Legal California Cities Conference and in other venues that you've been participating in. So again, we have always considered this to be a very important topic for us to continue to work on improving our code, and we really welcome your direction and persistence and vigilance on this issue, particularly for the children and youth of our community.
Any comments, any questions, any?
I appreciate the update on the FDA stuff because I feel like everything I'm reading, I just couldn't keep track of kind of where they are and what the timelines are. So I guess my first feedback is, let's just wait on flavored products because if they're going to do it for us, Adam, I like you, but I don't need to pay you if somebody else is going to do it for us. So that sounds like that's going to be addressed. I think one of the things that I guess I thought we had addressed, but I guess we didn't, and it's not on this list, that I'd liked us to consider adding, is distance from the front door of businesses and outdoor dining areas. I think now our dis— what's that?
Yeah, we do.
We do, but we have a minimum of like 20 feet or 25 feet. And I thought we'd extend it to about 100.
We can extend it.
Yeah, so I would like to look at extending it. And the reason that came to my mind was my son's daycare that he was going to, they finally put up signs saying you got to be whatever, whatever it is, 20, 25 feet away, which is the standard distance. And to me, that just doesn't seem far enough, that if you can stand, you know, at your car and I have to walk by you with my child to get to daycare or to go to dinner, you're too stinking close. So I don't know how we do it, but I would like to explore what other ways we've seen communities do it that have been successful, that extend that further. Because again, if I'm sitting in an outdoor dining area and the wind's blowing the right way and I can smell your smoke, that means my kids can too. And then last is, I think we should really explore banning all indoor and multifamily smoking. And for a whole host of reasons, besides the fact that secondhand smoke and a lot of other things, the risk of fire, the property damage and deterioration that it does to the units in general, make it a less desirable product, even if you rip the carpet out and you repaint it and you do everything that you're supposed to do to get rid of that smell, it doesn't go away that fast. And as somebody who bought a home from former smokers, and they spent a lot of time in the garage doing that, and even when you repaint the entire thing with odor blocking, it still took four months before the smell really went away. And power washing the concrete and everything else, and it still took that long. So I would love to explore that at some point. But yeah, I think the flavor ban, I know Sacramento, a lot of other ones have tackled that, I think the federal government, in a rare instance, might help do some good that we would have done on our own, but I think if they're going to do it, great, we'll be done with it. I also, I don't know if the city can really have any role in this, but the black market versions of these vaping products, and a lot of them have been coming down to Chinese manufacturers, really around THC and marijuana-related products. But if there is any kind of extra enforcement or— a lot of these are probably federal laws because they're being shipped or mailed through Amazon and a lot of other places. If there is anything at a local level that we can do or increase the penalties for producers or manufacturers or the logistics companies that are delivering them, I would be really interested in understanding more about that. But that's my initial feedback, and I really do appreciate you bringing this back because I think Lynda and I got really excited that there's this thing that we need to do. And again, as I started to read more, I was realizing that I think somebody's going to do that job for us and we don't need to tackle it.
Yeah. And I agree with Donald on that. The, this is very similar to the plastic bags. And I kept bringing out plastic bags and bringing it up and bringing it up, and I couldn't get anybody to vote with me, and then finally the state did it.
I voted with you.
Okay, but for the years that you weren't here.
Yes.
Okay. And then finally—
You didn't vote for it then.
No, we didn't. You would have been Spirit.
Yeah.
I know—
You could have come to the dais and said—
I opposed it the first time we talked about it. I changed my mind, but that still wasn't enough. It was just us.
Okay, so I, yes, it definitely seems that the more that there are well-publicized issues of disease and death from vaping products, that the feds are really going to do something about it, so. And I also agree with prohibiting smoking in multifamily housing. From my perspective, this is like going into a hotel room, and I can't imagine being in Donald's position about buying a house where the people had smoked. Seriously, I don't think we would have bought the house we're in now if the person before us had been a smoker.
It was baked into the price.
You know, any way you look at it, especially for anybody who's got asthma or anything like that, we've all probably had the experience of having to, having to take a last hotel room that was not just a no-smoking banned hotel room, and it's really a problem, especially when you go to other parts of the United States where they're not necessarily as keen on no-smoking as we are in California. So from my perspective, aside from the damage that's done to the property, there's the physical damage that comes with being in a property where people have been smoking and I would put it in, I mean, it's not as dramatic, but I'd put it in the same category as bedbugs, so, and eliminate it in multifamily housing. And I agree. The association supports that, and the people who are responsible, property owners, will be very happy, and those who aren't will obviously need to have a chat with.
Okay, thanks, Lynda. Garrett?
I think with a lot of the stuff, we just wait. We don't really need to enforce anything new, Rancho. I think it's, I'm with Donald. Huh?
Yes, it is. It's on.
No, I agree. I just think a lot of it is waiting because there's a lot of new rules and regulations that are going to pass through, so I think if we just wait it out, that's basically how I feel about it.
David?
Does that include multifamily housing? Since we have support—
Do we think anything's going to come down the rule that's going to push multifamily housing at the federal level to make it so it's illegal, or is it something we have to do as our city? Is there any other—
That's not a federal—
Are the other cities doing it as well? Have they blocked it out in Sacramento and the other areas?
Yeah.
Oh, then yes.
Did you hear the stats on that? Indoor—
The last one.
Yeah.
Jurisdiction.
Just in Northern California.
And see, that's a little disappointing because when we passed our vaping and e-cigarette rules, we were the first in this region to do it. And again, I think you'd even said award-winning, we did win a few awards for that.
We did, yeah.
So we were recognized in a lot of different places. It'd be interesting the next time that we bring this to invite Breathe California or somebody else, whoever does that report card, Adam, that we have a B+ on, I'd be interested to know how far we need to go with this to get an A under there. And again, that shouldn't be our standard, but I would be curious to understand, like, who's getting an A and what did they do? And are those things that we're willing to consider?
David?
I agree with my colleagues on the multifamily issue. We've raised that previously. There was not strong opposition, as I recall, from the industry, from the association. I think many of them feel it would assist them in their business practices to be able to have smoke-free housing and be able to market that. So I think that's of interest. I think the state and/or the feds are going to take action on e-cigarettes and vaping, and I'd kind of like to see what they do and then see if we need to go beyond that in some way. Personally, my, you know, main motivation here, aside from the general health aspect that's out there in the media, is the impact that vaping is having on kids. High school students in particular are vaping at record levels, of course. It's an issue at virtually every high school. Different high schools have handled it differently. The number of devices now that are vapes, that don't look like vapes, you know, this pen could be a vape device, this phone could be a vape device, they're very well-hidden in some cases, and very often they're being used to deploy THC to teens, and of course, that has permanent impact on their brains. So that's a very scary place for me, sort of as a medical scientist, to see what's going on there. And I don't know exactly what we do as a city to disrupt it because obviously this is international trade and it's black market and all sorts of things that we really don't have much influence on. But if we could somehow decrease, you know, the prevalence of e-cigarettes and vaping in our jurisdiction and the accessibility of those products to our kids through what are now legal methods at smoke shops, et cetera, I'd be all in favor.
And the, I agree with you about the multifamily. Let's see what's going on with the federal. If you go back to the Governor Newsom page you had on that, about two pages back from that one, the only place that I found in this whole pages thing about anything other than tobacco was allocated $20 million in tobacco and cannabis program funds for a vaping awareness campaign. So is that then including the cannabis for the vaping?
Yeah, I'm looking at that order right now, and it is stated that simply. There are, I think, just two sources of money that this draws upon. There's the monies that have been collected from tobacco enforcement and tobacco settlements, I believe, and tobacco taxes. And then there's also the various divisions on the state taxes that are being collected from the cannabis industry, and this is one place, as a number of council members' comments indicate, you're using the same technology to get kids to smoke two different things. So—
Well, then it would include that.
Yeah, so it's just, it literally just says, be it further word, that the CDPH media allocate a total of at least $20 million in tobacco and cannabis program funds for vaping awareness campaign, including digital and social media messaging focused on youth, young adults, and parents. This will build on award-winning and longest-running anti-tobacco program in the nation, so recognizing the success of those efforts.
It just seems to me that this particular executive order is very contradictory because at the bottom, you know, Tax and Fee Administration is supposed to figure out how to remove illegal and counterfeit vaping products and to reduce youth vaping consumption, period. But then if you go back to the top, it simply says to reduce the availability for people under 21 and to establish standards and then to allocate money for a vaping awareness campaign, which are two or three activities that potentially allow it to just continue. And so the question is, and from my perspective, this list of local actions that you've provided to us, some of them, like Santa Clara County, banned it except in adult-only stores? Well, okay, guys. So if the adult brings it into the house, there's lots of ways for somebody who is under 21 to get it. So either we ban it or we don't, but the bottom line is probably we really wait for the feds to do it.
If they're going to. The, we still have the, cannabis is still a legal drug as far as the federal government's concerned. It's used in California and Oregon and Washington State and, I'm not sure how many other states, but it's still against the law in the federal government. So excuse the pun, but federal law trumps state law. So that's, you know, it's a secondhand smoke from tobacco, or I would think secondhand smoke from cannabis is the same thing from marijuana, right? But nothing is really mentioned in most of these things. And as I said, the only thing I found on this, all these papers right here, then the laws we were talking about, was this one sentence right here about cannabis program awareness, and it seems to me like you're, they are ignoring the secondhand smoke problem from cannabis.
They are.
Marijuana. So I guess we'll see what they all do with it, but it's—
Well, you know—
A loss.
Adam, correct me if I'm wrong. All of our ordinances cover cannabis as a tobacco product too, right? So if it's banned smoking that far from a door, that's marijuana and tobacco and vaping, right? They're all treated the same?
And we can certainly double-check for—
Okay.
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
I think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, and so one of the interesting things, we just started from PD here, if we have questions about it, but one interesting thing that, as we were talking about enforcement the last time, I kind of brought this up, the folks from PD came over to me to say that the ban of smoking in parks has been a very useful tool to PD, that they have been using that quite a bit to stop and talk to people, and they are writing tickets for it. So it would be an interesting tool when we're talking about, you know, indoor— So it would be an interesting tool when we're talking about, you know, indoor multifamily, where everyone thinks that it's the wauwaw west and you can smoke marijuana wherever the heck you want, right? Whether it's walking down the street or in our parks and other things, you can't, right? Just because the state says you can possess it and you can use it, doesn't mean that everyone that is within 200 feet of you gets to smell it, right? So this would get to parts of those issues, too.
Will?
So you just want direction?
And if I may, just add a few comments on the council members' comments that I heard. As we think about the right way to work up and do any community outreach with respect to these different items, we will certainly look at the most efficient way to bring these items back to you. I think that the increase in smoking distance restrictions, that is probably something that wouldn't require a great deal of work or a great deal of community outreach to discuss that with affected parties. As the councils suggested, the, a full prohibition on multifamily housing, that's something that we think would likely be a much more constructive conversation here at the council and one that would be much more predictable if we did at least a decent amount of community outreach to the apartment association and other related interest groups. And also, I think I completely agree with the overall comments about communicating with the Breathe California, the Lung Association, and other public health groups. And we will then hold off on the actual bans or further regulations of flavored cigarettes. So we'll take a look and talk to the City Manager's Office and planning, but I would think that there's a decent chance we'd bring back two different ordinances, one immediately or one very quickly with the distance bans, and then do a little bit of community outreach work on the multifamily stuff and bring that back as a second change. Or if we could get it all done efficiently, package it up. But we certainly would want to move quickly on the distance restrictions if we could.
So Donald wanted some comment. I understand-
I don't think everybody had weighed in on that one.
Except that, that the figure that you mentioned, 100 feet, not everybody has a parking lot that's 100 feet big or wide or deep or whatever.
I'm just asking to explore it. I don't have an answer or a number in mind.
It's, if you think about, if you think about the places that you go in general, property owners or business owners seem to have been fairly polite about choosing locations that are, while they may be only 20 or 25 feet away, they're still not right in the front door. They're kind of like around the corner or someplace else. And they're just not, they're not as visible as they used to be when everybody just walked outside the front door and stood there with the trash can. So I'm not 100% certain we need to do that. But, I mean, it's worth talking about.
I mean, and maybe there's another approach. Maybe it's each business needs to designate a space that's at least a certain amount of distance away, unless that's not possible because of the size of the parking area or the, again, maybe it's talking to the chamber and figuring out if there's a workable solution. I mean, to me, it's the same conversation that we would have about like the grandfathered shopping carts, that if we gave them five years to try to do something and address it, and maybe this is a three-year rollout or something, because obviously, they've got update signage and there's a lot of other things that would come with it. But I would be really, I just, there was nothing presented here on that item. I would just be interested to see what other approaches have come along and if they've worked. Because, and again, I would, you know, the first time I was ever in Europe was going to Ireland like two weeks after their smoking ban went into place in bars, and they thought it was going to be the end of the pub scene and pubs were going to go out of business all across the country. Nothing like that ever happened. So I know every once in a while, you'll get a business owner that says, this is really important and this is really a problem. The Park District, the first year, they thought this was going to destroy the Fourth of July because we were banning smoking in the parks. None of those things ever came to fruition.
I would just remind folks that one of the things that we haven't talked at all about is the fire danger from cigarette butts. We still see an amazing number of people tipping their ashes and dropping their cigarettes outside of cars.
The funniest thing is the people-
Sixty miles down the road.
The funniest thing is the people who are riding down the road and they've got their window rolled up, but their hand is stuck out the top of the window, holding the cigarette. It's like, if you're really going to smoke this thing, why don't you keep it in the car with you?
Does it, and it makes them smell bad.
I still think that's very odd.
And we certainly have-
The whole thing is odd.
The whole thing is very odd.
Mr. Mayor, I think one related to the distance, I think we've heard from two council members, it would be, we'd like to hear from the rest of the council if there's an interest for staff to explore options.
Thank you.
I'm not interested in doing that to business owners at all. I don't want to have to do that at my business, and so I'm not interested in, we have smoking and we put it far out, and so they can go towards that, and they don't have, there's enough regulations to say you can't have smoking right outside your business as of right now, and so I'm not interested in making a distance because some of the businesses I know don't have a distance and the people already have to go outside underneath the thing, way away from the business to smoke, because no one wants the smoking. So it's really kind of extra-
So then you're complaining already.
Yeah, so there's really not a need to pass more regulations to make them move their stuff, so, yeah, no.
David?
I guess I'm probably going to have to span either side. I'm not certain. I would be supportive of increasing the distance. Probably need a little more information about it. But I am generally interested in not exposing people who don't want to be exposed to cigarette smoke, to cigarette smoke. So my bias would probably be in favor, but I can't say at this point I'm ready to pick another number.
Are you interested in exploring that item?
I'd explore it.
Okay. That's all I'm, that's all I'm asking for. I don't have-
I'm pretty exploring also, but.
So I think- To be clear, what we have as a clear direction from the council, multifamily, I think there seems to be general support for that. On vaping, I think we are hearing that maybe wait for, to see if the state is going to take any specific action and then explore the options related to distance from businesses. Is that a good recap and summary? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think we now have a speaker on this item? We do. Darryl Langwell.
I'd have been disappointed if you hadn't said something.
Good evening, Darryl Langwell, Vineyards Neighborhood. When you start looking at banning smoking in multifamily dwellings, you have to think about unintended consequences. There was just a meeting earlier this, today about homelessness in the area. Housing is restricted and everything. A lot of these apartment complexes and that sort of stuff, areas have people that aren't of great means. And if you start banning smoking and some of those people are hardcore smokers, are you going to put more people on the streets because they can't find a place that they can afford to live? It's just something that you might want to take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one follow-up to that, because there was that argument for years that veterans are more likely to smoke, and the VA hospitals finally this year, like just a couple of months ago, banned all smoking on their campuses. And they're the last, like, medical system to do that in the country. And it was interesting because there was a radio story about this, and they found one guy at Mather who wanted to complain about it, and that was the only person. But the VA system in general, completely across all of their campuses, has banned smoking as well. So, I mean, you know, we should make it harder for people to kill themselves. Sorry.
Okay, do we have anyone else who wants to speak on this?
I do not.
Anyone else in the audience? Okay. Thank you. Then we'll go on to the next item. 16.5, would you announce the subject, please?
Fiscal Year 2018-19 Preliminary Year-end Financial Report and Budget Amendment. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, Kim Duran-Cara-Gorgio, Administrative Services Director. And I'm here this evening to present the Fiscal Year 2018-19 Preliminary Year-end Financial Report and Budget Amendment. And the preliminary in the title reflects the fact that the city, while we have closed our books for that fiscal year, we have not completed the audit process, and so they're not deemed final until we complete that process. So, starting with the revenue side of the equation, just want to kind of do an overview of 2018-19. The fiscal year 2018-19 is the second year of a two-year budget, which was prepared in the spring of 2017. And so at that time, we were using 2016-17 revenue figures to project forward for the next two years. And the assumption at that time, which has been kind of the ongoing assumption for the past few years, is that we're going to hit the end of this growth economy and the recession is around the corner, at least an economic slowdown. So we did predict that fiscal year 2018-19, that we would see an economic slowdown. That in fact has not occurred yet, and we are still continuing to experience revenue growth from both unanticipated sources of revenue, as well as we're still experiencing a strong local growth economy well into 2019. So I'm going to walk through the categories that are up here on the screen. So the first column, Fiscal Year 2015-16 Actual, kind of jumped down to the bottom line of total general fund revenue. At the end, in June of 2016, our general fund revenue budget was at 50.5 million. We had seen some steady increases, and you'll see that from 15-16 to the next column of 16-17, we saw about $800,000 of growth fiscal year over fiscal year to 2016-17. That brought us to 51.3 million. And then kind of going to the next column, the third one over, we saw about a $1.3 million increase going into 17-18. So overall, we've seen some of these steady increases. And then we got to this last year of 2018-19. We experienced what I would only call unprecedented revenue growth in 2018-19. I'm going to go into a little bit of explanation of why. But a $4.6 million increase over the prior year actuals. So growth unlike any that we have seen here at the city in recent memory. So overall, those last four columns kind of go through what the original budget was anticipated to be, again, using what we knew back in 2017, what we projected, the 55.8 million, that is what we projected, that we were going to end this year out when we put together the current two-year budget back in May of 2019. And it even surpassed that to what we are at, what I'm describing today. So what are the main drivers of the revenue increase? First of all, taxes is a big part of the picture. I'm going to have another slide, then I'm going to talk a little bit more in detail about taxes in a minute. Building permit activity has stayed at prior year levels. We were anticipating that we're going to start to see somewhat of a slowdown and a drop-off. That has not been the case. So we have seen a continuing strong permit revenue. Interest rates rose, so we saw higher-than-expected interest earnings. And then we also saw, because of the extraordinary levels of development activity, we had higher-than-anticipated cost recovery in our departments, so planning and public works both had about $1 million more of cost recovery than in prior years. So this next slide takes us into the taxes. And I'm going to go into detail on a few of these that are really the main drivers. The first line is property taxes. And as you look through, we started in 15-16, our property taxes were at 13.7 million, and we ended 18-19 at 17.1 million. And so that's about a 24% increase over just four years in property taxes. Historically, the city has hovered around 2% annually, so this is quite extraordinary over what we've seen in years past. The city benefited both last year, in 17-18 and 18-19, from what is called RDA, the receipt of RDA boomerang funds. So these are property tax revenues that the city received as a result of the dissolution of redevelopment agencies. That was not even really on the radar in 2016-17. We had not received any, and then all of a sudden, in 17-18, we started to receive that. We received about $750,000 of those funds in 18-19. And in addition, the city has been able to recapture a significant number of the properties that were, whose value was reduced during the recession under Prop 8. Over the past five years, that value recapture has occurred. So we've gone from a high of a total of 8,500 properties in the city at the peak in 2012 that were basically beyond the, or below the value they were purchased for, and we're down to about 1,200 today.
Then exceeded, exceeded what they had been before the Proposition 8 reduction.
In many cases, they have. Not in all, but most. And then in addition, so that's a story with property tax. Sales tax, we have seen about a 12% increase in sales tax during that same four-year period. And that even comes in 16, if you'll recall, back in 15-16, 16-17, we were grappling with the loss of our largest sales tax generator at that time. We were hit with the news when we were putting together this past two-year budget that we had lost our, a very large sales tax generator. We weren't sure what was going to happen with sales tax. And what we've seen is just kind of a continuation of growth despite that. We've continued to kind of struggle with just kind of honing in on that number because we have a very strong business-to-business economy in the city, and that just makes our sales tax very unpredictable. And we also are continuing to deal with the ramifications of misallocations from the State Board of Equalization as a result of their new system implementation. In 18-19, we received about $1 million of prior year sales tax revenues that just, they didn't get to us until 18-19. They were cleaning up some of that mess. And so again, that makes kind of just trend forecasting very difficult when we don't even have accurate numbers to rely upon. The next category, transient occupancy tax, just another kind of interesting phenomenon. Usually, TOT, you see peak at a certain point, which we thought was around 17-18, because you hit the max occupancy rates that you can achieve and you kind of hit that top room rental, room rate. And we thought we'd achieve that in 17-18, and lo and behold, that is not the case. We did hit our max occupancy rates, but room rates have continued to grow in the region, fueled by some pretty significant room rate increases in downtown Sacramento. So that has enabled hotels in retro Cordova to increase their rates. So we have seen some significant growth there as well. And then I would say the last category I just want to kind of highlight would be property transfer tax. That's sort of the second-to-last one on this chart. And this is just a function of simply how many properties turn over in the city, the value of those properties. And so as this continues to be a strong sign, or I should say, a sign of a strong economy, and we saw revenues in excess of the budget. So overall, all positive news on the revenue front.
I just continue to think it's very odd that, that even though we apparently really do get the property transfer tax on your escrow list, it talks about county transfer tax. And I just, you know, it strikes me as something where we always need to be vigilant, that if we think we're selling more properties than you're getting transfer tax from, somebody needs to ask them about it.
We do have consultants who closely monitor all that data that goes through the county for us on our behalf, so we are watching that. So any questions on revenues before I move on to the expense side? So just kind of quickly walking through, similar to- So just kind of quickly walking through, similar to the revenue side, eighteen nineteen finances in, in review, just some things, because this was the second year of a two-year budget, we did have some things that came up that we did not anticipate when we put the budget together initially. One, as we discussed during the budget process, we do, each year, the sheriff does give us a budget. They try to do two-year budgets, but that second year is never certain until we get to that second year. And we had some significant increases in retirement costs that were not anticipated in the original budget. Over the course of the year, we did agree to forgive two loans, one to Mather Veterans Village, and one for the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce. Those were not anticipated. We did host the NAMJEN start in two thousand nineteen. And then we also officially dissolved the former Rancho Cordova Community Redevelopment Agency by the purchasing the final property on Folsom Boulevard. So those are all items that we did during the course of eighteen nineteen, because we knew we had sufficient revenues. But we do have to amend the budget slightly to accommodate for those. So on the expense side, similar to what I talked about on the revenue side, if you look at the bottom line, you'll see kind of overall, where overall general fund expenditures have been in the last four years, starting with fifteen sixteen, at forty-nine point nine million. I do want to point out, though, that these are kind of, these are final year-end numbers. And we did do some, we had some budget amendments that we brought forward that are incorporated into these, and I just want to remind the council of what some of these numbers include. So, in the past few years, with some of the general fund surplus dollars, we've been able to eliminate all inter-fund loan debt that we thought there might be a problem with repaying in a timely manner, so we were able to forgive all those inter-fund loans. We unfortunately were directed by the state to write off about four point six, four point seven million dollars in RDA debt that was, that it was in existence between the RDA and the city. So we did do that. And then we also purchased the ten-acre property on Folsom Boulevard. And so I want to point these out, because as you look at these numbers, forty-nine point nine million in fifteen sixteen, that included quite a few of those loan forgiveness that I discussed. The sixteen seventeen fifty-one point two million includes the write-off of those RDA loans, and the fifty-two point four million in seventeen eighteen includes the purchase of the property on Folsom Boulevard. So these are all things that we've been able to do with our general funds surplus dollars in the past few years. So finally, moving into eighteen nineteen, as I described, we ended the year just slightly over budget at fifty-one point six million, as a result of some of those things that we saw on the prior slide. However, well below the revenues, actual revenues received, which provides an opportunity for the redirection of some of those surplus general fund dollars. Which brings me to the proposed budget amendment for eighteen nineteen. So as I described, we have about two hundred thousand dollars of unanticipated expenses that we need to amend the budget for. And then we have three priority projects that staff is recommending that surplus dollars be put towards. The first is about two, two point five million dollars of general fund surplus being directed to the city's road rehabilitation program. And this is something that was discussed in the context of the preparation of the current two thousand nineteen and twenty-one budget, because we did have a shortfall to complete the program that we wanted to, and so we knew that this was something that we wanted to utilize those funds for. One point two million dollar transfer to the capital facilities fund. This is not earmarked for anything in particular, but I do know there's several projects on the horizon that these funds could potentially be used for in the next year. And then finally, a two million dollar transfer to the information technology fund, to continue to fund some of the IT initiatives projects. We have the city clerk department is doing the document management system upgrade, and the finance department will be embarking on a new finance system. And so these funds would be to cover those projects. So finally, in closing, wanted to just kind of change direction for a minute. I think many of you probably saw about a week ago that the state auditor released a local government high-risk dashboard. It was in the paper and so on. And basically, it ranked cities, starting from one being basically considered the highest risk of financial struggles, and down to four hundred and seventy-one being the lowest. And so, this list put Rancho Cordova at three hundred and seventy-five out of four hundred and seventy-one cities. It's based on two thousand sixteen seventeen fiscal year data. And interestingly enough, we, the city ranked low risk in all categories except one, which was OPEB funding. It said there, the city was high risk. It doesn't provide any real context or data for how it determined the city was high risk.
What is it?
OPEB, so, OPEB is the kind of post-retiree healthcare benefits that the city provides, or doesn't really provide much. It's a, kind of just your CalPERS. Not much at all. And we actually fund, we have set aside funds, we were funded at sixty percent at the end of sixteen seventeen, and we're currently funded at eighty percent. And we've kind of made an internal decision not to go above eighty percent, that that was sufficient, because we need a lot of room for kind of interest earnings and so forth. So overall, I would say it's a bit of an unfair ranking on that note, but overall, a very positive report, three seventy-five out of four seventy-one.
Why, you have any idea why they ranked us at risk on OPEB?
That's what I'm saying.
Our OPEB per retiree, or our OPEB per employee, or our OPEB per population of our city must be incredibly low.
It's the funding side of it. It wasn't even the OPEB itself. It's how mu, how much of a, how much we have set aside to fund our OPEB liability, and at sixteen seventeen, we had funded sixty percent of our.
Because we have so few OPEBs.
They have, they provided no additional context or information to how they came up with it. I actually put in a, a request to get more information, but at this point in time, it's unknown.
Not sweat the small stuff. Just because somebody came out with a report doesn't mean that they know what the hell they're doing.
At this point in time, it's dumb.
Yeah. I, I think even.
And we're on record as saying that, let's not go and take like, two million dollars and set it aside for this, so that we can be ranked high and not fix roads or something else.
No, I think even, even with this, we're still ranked the lowest in the region. So this is something to be proud of.
We did talk once about setting an irrevocable trust aside to fund OPEB, and it's not very much money to do that for us.
We do have one.
Yeah.
We do have one.
That's the sixty percent funded trust.
That's the sixty percent as of, and it's eighty percent today.
Eighty percent funded.
Like total, complete eighty percent funded.
Correct.
Is the most the Trinidad of Humboldt County?
Yes, it is.
Okay. This is a silly report, and we should never talk about it again ever. I'm sorry, I'm from the header. This is just ridiculous.
So, let's just move on and chalk it up to the state doesn't know what they're doing.
So that's the end of my report. Happy to answer any questions about the finance report.
So that was a, you didn't call it out, but that's about a five point seven million dollar surplus, is what we're anticipating?
Yes, it is.
For the last fiscal year?
Yes.
And you've identified about five point seven million in amendments?
Correct.
To accommodate that? Is there anything different in this pattern of proposed budget amendments from what we've done previously with surpluses?
I would say the only change is that we are kind of doing it more pro, now we're looking forward and being more proactive as far as funding future projects, whereas some of the past year budget amendments were, I guess I would say, cleaning up some of the inter-fund loans and things that we felt maybe weren't going to be able to be repaid, whereas this is allowing us to kind of do something going forward.
Well, in terms of a policy, we've had basically a policy about how to deal with surpluses at year-end. And so is this following those guidelines, and specifically cares about the two million for IT?
So this is not, this, so the, the reserve policy that you're referencing is any remaining surplus. And so this would basically redirect those surplus dollars to specific projects and programs, rather than having it be allocated out as it would normally be. So typically, the reserve policy would take, I think it goes fifty percent to the capital facilities reserve, and then twenty-five percent to the infrastructure reserve, which is where the road rehabilitation program is. And then the remaining twenty-five percent goes into the general fund. We currently already have what I would deem a sufficient general fund reserve, and do not have a need to fund, further fund the general fund reserve at this time. And so this is essentially redirecting those dollars to projects and programs that were identified that needed some funding.
What would our remaining surplus be then on the books?
At this point in time, this would pretty much take it down to below a hundred thousand.
If you look at that surplus number over time, I'm assuming there's multimillion-dollar figures in there. I know there are, for some years. Zeroing it out, or near zeroing it out? I don't know if that looks great.
I think as long as we have a balanced budget, which is what we are shooting for, that I think we're in good shape. I think that's a policy decision, to be honest with you, of whether or not there's a desire to have a surplus from a financial standpoint, as long as we're balanced. I think we're comfortable with that.
I think the, the prior, the policy has been the fifty twenty-five twenty-five, as Kim expressed. The, the question is that we still are ending up with a surplus. It's the allocation of the fifty twenty-five twenty-five. So we, we are, as, as Kim mentioned, the, the twenty-five percent that goes into the general fund surplus, there's plenty sufficient reserves at this point. So it's the decision.
You already have the, you already have the, the reserves, and now we have money on top of the reserves.
Right.
That just got extra.
Right.
And so we're spending it on, on IT nerds.
On, on projects that are needed or deemed necessary at this point, so.
So it'd be fifty-two, just to reiterate what was our policy. It would be fifty-two.
Fifty, let me just go back to, so fifty percent would go to our capital facilities fund, so this one point two million would be, if we were just to allocate according to the reserve policy, that one point two million would be closer to two point, probably closer to two point eight-five million. And then the remaining amount would go to, twenty-five percent of it would go to our infrastructure fund, which is what this road rehabilitation program is essentially. It's just we're identifying a project rather than a fund. So twenty-five percent would go to that, and then the remaining would go into state in the general fund.
All right. It's kind of cute to do it this way. I don't know if I really like it. I like having nice surpluses to report. I can't really disagree with where it's going. Maybe if this is the intent going forward, we need to abolish the surplus policy, though, since we're basically bypassing it at this point.
And I think it does make sense for us now that we, as the city manager has noted, since we have established our reserve funds at a level that we feel is adequate, to just revisit the reserve policy overall and see if it still makes sense for us.
I, I would like to do that, yeah.
Yep.
I mean, come, again, coming from a government that, the state law capped how much you could have. And I, I would argue, in some regards, I, I believe we have too much in reserves.
Have too much.
Yeah, because, because you could, you could be offering a higher level of service if you chose not to.
But reserves also generate revenue. They generate enormous amount of stability. So when that downtime comes, you don't have to cut away the services you promised to people. You can buffer yourself on the way down.
You can, but you're also sacrificing current-day service for that.
In order not to cause great pain in the future, yeah. I mean, the state of California does this, right? New revenues come in, let's spend it all, let's add more programs.
I'm not saying spend it all, but I'm saying.
Oh, there's a crisis.
I'm saying, at what, at what point is more than you need?
It's a lot.
In, in your opinion.
I think, I, I just want to be clear, I think we can still report out a surplus. The question is that how the surplus funds are being allocated. I think it, we are, the recommendation from, from staff is to modify the fifty twenty-five twenty-five, but I think reporting out the surplus still remains the standard.
I think the proposal is to modify the budget and reduce the surplus to, you know, ten or fifty thousand dollars from five point seven million.
I, that's, I think that's been done for the last sixteen years. They, they always, you know, after the allocation was done, even if the surplus was five dollars, that's how it would be reported out. So this is not new or unique or different.
Because if I'm not mistaken, it's.
That's very confusing.
It's, it's a matter of ending with a surplus and then.
Right.
Transferring the, some of the funds from that surplus to different places.
That I'm fine with, but my understanding was, we are engaging with this action to end with no surplus, or virtually no surplus, in a year when we had a massive surplus.
That has always been.
I, I think I, I just want to be clear, because this is, traditionally, that is, this is what we've done based on the fifty twenty-five twenty-five. So the only thing that's different this year, or the only thing that we recommend. Is the allocation of fifty twenty-five twenty-five.
And I'm fine, I'm fine with that alteration, but I, I would rather have us report a five-point million dollar surplus, rather than say, no, our surplus is only a hundred thousand, because we spent all the rest. You understand the difference?
I, I, I fully understand, but I really want to be clear, even the years that we were reporting a significant surplus, we had, actually, the book showed only surplus of like, twenty-five thousand. This was not.
We didn't hold that and spend it like, the subsequent fiscal year?
No, those, the, even if we allocate according to the reserve policy, those are all done prior to sort of the official closing. And so the, all that would remain in the general fund in that scenario is that twenty-five percent. So if it was fifty, the fifty twenty-five twenty-five reserve policy allocation, that the other seventy-five percent would go and shift to the other funds prior to the official close of the books, and only that twenty-five percent would remain in the general fund. Just that, that is how it is done each year.
So, so I think one way to state it, you know, this year, we can say, we do have a surplus of five point seven million. This is how it's been allocated. In the past, the number would be, it's the same thing, you know, but some surplus, and then it would be allocated based on the fifty twenty-five twenty-five formula.
Yeah, I'm okay with the different formulas. As long as we can report a big surplus, I think we're fine.
And I think.
Because it continues a trend, and it's a very good storyline for fiscal responsibility in Rancho Cordova. That gives us a lot of credibility with other agencies and funders and all sorts of people.
And I would say that, you can still say that with the operating, because this is a below-the-line sort of transfer, when we look at surpluses, we look at the operating surplus, and overall, these are not operating costs. And so I think there's a kind of a difference between operating surplus and then kind of official kind of closing out.
These are all capital expenditures.
Correct.
In essence, even the IT.
And transfers.
All right, well, what do you think next year's going to be? That's the big question.
Wait and see.
So I will move that we receive the fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen preliminary year-end financial report and adopt the resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen budget.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item sixteen point six. City Clerk to announce the subject, please.
Two thousand twenty city council meeting schedule. So this is my item. And to ensure maximum attendance at our council meetings, not only for each of the council members, city staff, but also for the community, we have set a two thousand twenty calendar for our council meetings. That was in your packet, and tonight, we would like to approve the two thousand twenty calendar and adopt the resolution.
I will move approval of the two thousand twenty calendar and adoption of the resolution that this.
Have a second on that?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Seventeen, council request for future agenda items.
I have one.
Yes, Linda?
So I told Cyrus before the meeting that we've all received a letter about a person who was being evicted from their, from their apartment. And I understand that city staff has created some resolution for that. However, in Sacramento Bee this morning, in the editorial, it turns out that the county is adopting a no-fault eviction ordinance to hopefully prohibit landlords who are trying to evict all their tenants prior to the rent stabilization going into effect. Of course. So, I'm very sensitive to that. From my perspective, that's an extremely impolite, rude thing to do. From my perspective, that's an extremely impolite, rude thing to do. And, and if, if staff researches the county's ordinance and figures out that we can do that, then I would like to see us discuss adopting the same kind of resolution. And I understand that it's a very short timeframe, but.
That'd be an emergency ordinance.
But, yeah, it would. And this is probably a very important topic for a lot of people who live in Rancho Cordova.
And it's happening to a lot of people in Rancho Cordova, I'm hearing, too.
Is it?
The, the, yeah, essentially what's happening is, I mean, you can read it in the Bee, but to try to get ahead of the new rent stabilization act that they passed, if you evict them in this year and you start new contracts this year, you can, you can stave that off for a certain amount of time.
So they're going to either sign the new contract or they're out.
No, 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 they have to go out first.
So they're kicking them out just?
Yep.
So they can bring it back in at a higher rate?
Yeah. But they have to leave first, as far as I understand. You can't just, you can't, you, they have to be evicted, they have to leave, and then you can sign a new, a new lease agreement. Yeah. And there, it's happening all over the state. So, yeah, if, if there is a way to do an emergency bill through the, or legislation for us through the end of the year, I by all means would support that.
You all can read the Bee's editorial today, but it, it was prompted by a, a particular apartment complex in probably Arden Arcade somewhere, where they evicted three hundred and seventy-four people. And, yeah. At least I think that's what it said. It was a significant number of people.
Yeah, the story was Friday, I believe, of last week?
Yeah.
The editorial was, was yesterday.
Today.
Was it today?
Today.
Okay, yeah. So, but that was an editorial following up on the actual news article in the Bee. Well, the editorial was today, but, yeah, the, the story explaining why.
Things in the Bee wander around, so go find it.
There's a story in the LA Times from last week, too.
Were these evictions to facilitate the upgrade of the apartment units?
No. It's to, if they can get a new lease this year for a unit, then it will predate the new rules that will go into effect for any lease that they sign next year. So if they can get a new lease this year, then that stays into effect until they have a new lease.
So you could evict everyone, but then sign them all back in?
Right.
But you still have to actually evict them.
Yeah.
Well, does that mean they have to leave or do they fake leave?
Yes. No. As far as I understand, they have to leave. That's what the story says.
Has anyone, has, is, have you heard about, happened to any of our place in Rancho yet?
Yes. That's the letter we all got.
Well, but it was one person.
That was a single individual.
Admittedly, it was one person. And staff says they took care of that.
One person that told us.
Yeah.
But staff looked into that.
For, for him. What I'm, what I'm saying is, somebody called the Bee and said, this many people are being evicted, and they figured it out. How many other places out there do we know or not know that it's happening? Somebody told us. That doesn't mean that's the one person that it's happening to. So, no, it's, it's a huge, regardless if it's happening a bunch, if we can prevent anyone from figuring it out in the next two weeks by passing something next week, I'm all for it.
That would be my perspective, to be, to be proactive and, and ensure that it doesn't happen, if, if at all possible.
Because, because timing now is, you're going to get an eviction notice between now and Thanksgiving and have to move out by Christmas. So, if there's a way to prevent that, I'd like to do that.
That's like, that's like firing people before Christmas.
That is just horrible.
Could I, could I just ask for Councilmember Sander and Mayor McGarvey to chime in on the interest in scheduling an urgency ordinance? If it is legally feasible and productive to do so?
You know, governments entered into rent control. That has not been successful almost anywhere it's been tried, in my opinion. Usually has all sorts of untoward effects. This is one of them. You see right here. Any action we take is also going to have untoward effects entering in this, so I am sort of unsure as to whether I'd be willing to act in this or not.
So.
The, like the one that was brought earlier about the Mobile Country Club and all that?
This doesn't affect that.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the specific item, the suggestion from Councilmember Budge is related to an urgency ordinance for evictions without a cause, or.
Correct. It's called no-fault eviction.
Or no-fault evictions, right.
And we have a model, potentially, because the county is, is actively considering this right now.
Yeah, they have.
They may be voting on it this week.
When do they meet, Wednesdays?
I don't know anymore.
Tuesday is city.
Used to be Tuesday and Wednesday. I don't know.
I think, I think it's Wednesday morning if they're, I, I don't, I, are they actually voting on it this week?
That, that, it's my impression that's what the editorial said. I don't know.
I haven't read the editorial today.
So as a, as a, Mayor, are you interested in scheduling the item?
I'm, I'm sure about that.
Well, we only need three, and I think we have three.
I'm just asking, yeah.
And again, I would be looking at something that's on a temporary basis until the state legislation kicks in, but we don't need mass evictions during the holidays in our city.
The way the Bee phrased it, they're simply calling a moratorium.
Okay, I think I'm hearing three, Mr. City Manager. So absent, we'll, we'll dive into this and plan on having something on your next agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, Linda.
Hey, staff, can you guys figure out if this is happening?
You're not on.
Oh, sorry.
No, you are.
Staff, please figure out if this is actually really happening in our city, because I, I want to talk to the business owners that are doing this.
I'm not aware of any, but we can check into it.
Yeah, I think Stefan may be up to speed on it.
I think we've received one, one very specific complaint, but that's, that's all we have received.
But I, but I think the important part, too, is the more coverage this gets, the more property owners may get excited about doing this, that, oh, I can do that between now and the end of the year.
Yeah.
So.
So we do the ordinance, we cause mass evictions in Citrus Heights?
I should hope not.
This is a horrible way to say it, but that's their problem. And they can run their city how they want. These are our residents. Let's protect them.
Okay, thank you all.
Okay. Any other future agenda items? Then, thing done, we'll go into eighteen, and we'll adjourn to closed session.